Hi, welcome to the May 13th, 2014 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to recognize and thank Sue Colby for taking taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Station Channels 5, 19, and 20 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Valencini, do you have some announcements for us?
I do have some announcements. The next school committee meetings are June 10th, July 8th, August 9th, 2014. The Special Education Parent-
Is it August, I'm sorry, is it August 9th or 19th?
August 19th.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Okay. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee will meet from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the second floor conference room here at 50 Payson Avenue on the following dates, May 14th and June 11th. There is no school on Monday, May 26th due to Memorial Day. East Hampton High School Prom is scheduled for Saturday, May 17th, at the Delaney House. East Hampton High School Awards Night is Wednesday, June 4th, and East Hampton High School Graduation is Friday, June 6th. The last day of school is Wednesday, June 25th.
Thank you very much. Do we have correspondence? I will, yes, I think that we do. Sorry. So we've received a notification about an award given. A group from the East Hampton High School entered a competition to produce a video about healthy eating, I believe, and they, it was a very large pool of applicants, and this, the letter talked about how really high quality all of the entries were, and in spite of all of that, the East Hampton High School team got second place out of all the entries in the state. Excellent. So congratulations to them for their great work.
I'm very proud of them.
It was called Ace the Test. Do we get to see that video, or can we see it? Is there someplace we can see it?
Is that a request?
Yes, it's a request to see the video.
Yes, I will talk with them and see how we can arrange that.
Didn't I, you know, think there's a way?
I think there is too.
Mm-hmm. And gifts. We do have several gifts. Move to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. $1,000 from the Helping Hand Society for the East Hampton High School SAD Concert Fundraiser. $1,000 from Ken &amp; Real Estate for the High School SAD Concert Fundraiser. $1,000 from the Kiwanis Club of East Hampton for the SAD Concert Fundraiser. $150 from the Helping Hand Society for the East Hampton High School Class of 2014. And $1,208.92 from the Do Heart Scholarship for School to Work. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we're very grateful. Okay, at this time, it is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak to us about any topic that is not currently on the agenda, and we welcome anyone to come and speak to us. And we can see from the audience that that's probably not going to happen, but we want you to know that that opportunity exists at all of our meetings, so feel free to come. And we'll move on at this time to a presentation from Mr. William Deal.
Where should I be for this?
At the podium, please go. I did ask Bill to come and join us this evening. We had shared the new articles from the Collaborative here at one of our meetings, and Bill and I have been communicating back and forth, and he said he'd be more than willing to come and chat with you. That'd be a good opportunity for you all to meet the new Executive Director. We're thrilled that Bill has taken on that position, and for Bill to give us all a little background about the Collaborative and our relationship with the Collaborative.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you all for your time, and thank you also for your service as school committee members. There is a remarkable part of democracy that every place in the country, there are groups like this that volunteer to come together and educate our young people. It's a remarkable part of our American way of life, and you're to be commended for your service. I want to thank Wendy Bloomingfall for her service on our board, as well as the Superintendent for her staunch support of many of our initiatives, and of course, thank you to the Mayor for your time as well. So I've been Executive Director now for 10 weeks, and I was with the Collaborative before that for three and a half years as Deputy Director, so I'm familiar with the Collaborative, but I'm new to this position. And my background quickly is I've been an educator since 1970, early in the 70s. Classroom teacher, middle school and high school, a school administrator, and I taught at University of Michigan, Michigan State University Teacher Training for a number of years. I've been in Massachusetts for 20 years, working for non-pro, educational nonprofits. Before I joined the Collaborative, I headed up a national organization that set up schools for kids who had dropped out and returning. My passion has been for helping kids who have been placed at risk, both young kids, elementary school kids, and high school kids. So that's been my passion, and I'm really glad to be at the Collaborative where that passion is evident there in everything that we do. I'm really pleased that I'd be appointed there, and I really, because of my background, I've come to this work with a lot of empathy for the educators we work with, a lot of understanding of the kinds of issues and struggles and victories that we all face, as well as a lot of humility. I really feel humbled before the educators and the administrators I work with. So I'm really delighted to be part of this effort and hope to be able to serve you well. One of my first, I had four major goals in coming into the Executive Director position that were really geared through the first three months or four months. The first one, which is most important, I think, is to develop the collaboration itself. The Collaborative has, to some degree, existed as an organization that sits in North Hampton to which other school committees belong, and we provide services. Now, the spirit of the Collaborative really is we're collaborative of 36-member school districts, and the people who sit in North Hampton who observe those member districts. It's that spirit I really want to help to cultivate and deepen. It's there, but I think it can be expanded and deepened, and I really value your input in how we can best do that. So I thought one thing that would be helpful was to share with you the kinds of things that we do, as well as the services East Hampton is already taking advantage of. So you have a small flyer that lists some of the major things that we do, and inside the flyer is a chart that lists those same activities and shows the ones that East Hampton takes part in. So you'll see that basically, East Hampton takes part in about everything that we do, which we're pleased to see. We have direct services and special education, and alternative education. Mount Tom is a program on the campus of Holy Community College, and a couple of students from East Hampton go there. We also have the Union Center in East Hampton, to which kids come after school for tutoring help and school to work and internship support. And we have a whole lot of professional development, a lot of which your teachers not only take part in, but also help give. We have, some of your teachers are involved in helping prepare and provide that professional development. So we have a great partnership with East Hampton, and we're just delighted by that. So before I go on, do you have questions about any of the services on that chart that East Hampton's taking part in?
Just, if I may, I'd just comment on the, I know that you have an upcoming professional development program this summer.
We do.
You're going to speak of that in a moment.
I will certainly speak to that, sure.
I won't steal your thunder then.
Pardon?
I won't steal your thunder then, I was just going to say-
No, please, speak to it.
It's terrific. Kelly Brown and, I forget where Lori Reisler teaches, the woman that, the two of them are doing it together.
Right.
But it's going to be hosted at East Hampton High School, and an East Hampton teacher, and through the Collaborative, it's terrific, an example of what you do.
Absolutely, thank you so much. So I did bring the, I passed this catalog around, I didn't bring a lot of them for the ticket paper, but this is the catalog of the program. I believe there are 54 different programs during the summer in both Franklin and Hampshire County, and like the one Kelly Brown is doing, they're primarily done by teachers for teachers. We really are happy about that, that I think we have a lot of great teachers in the Valley, and the more they can showcase and help fellow teachers with their craft, the better. So I think it's a great, great example, and thank you for calling that out, I appreciate that.
If that helps me get into it, that's-
Absolutely.
I think there'll be a waiting list, so.
Absolutely. So any questions about any of the services?
I'll just mention that, you know, we have benefited greatly from our collaboration with the Collaborative now, and have taken advantage of many professional development opportunities, many grants we have done collaboratively with, that's a little bit redundant, isn't it? It used to be hack. But we have had great benefits from our association, there we go, with the Collaborative. And, as you can see, we, they offer things to us, and we take advantage of them, and they've all been high quality and very worthwhile.
Thank you. Also, I recall our early childhood work here. I think East Hampton is probably our most active community in terms of early childhood work. We have community partnerships, we've got some transition work between the preschool and early childhood educators and kindergarten, we have some mental health support for some of the families that are struggling in the community. And I think that, I think you've really helped us develop some really strong programs by the partnership, not only of the school district, but of the community itself. It's been a wonderful community to work with. So again, we're delighted to be part of that. So let me also mention the Articles of Agreement, which you did pass last time, or two times ago when you met, appreciate that. Just a little quick background about that, you may know that two or three years ago, a Collaborative in the Lawrence area really did some bad things in terms of their stewardship of money, and that resulted in, was state legislators saying, "We need to put more regulations around Collaboratives," correctly so. So they set a number of things in motion, most of which we already did, because we were so large to start with. For example, independent audits. Some Collaboratives had no audits, year, annual audits. We always did. So basically, the articles that you saw last time came from that. Part of the new legislation required new Articles of Agreement that really spelled out the fiscal responsibilities, how fees were set, membership, the responsibilities of members, et cetera. You probably saw it was a pretty detailed document, and it was really to fulfill the requirements of the state, but also, I think, to really set forth a pretty clear and transparent process for the Collaborative to work and to function with our member districts. So I think it's going to be a really good document to work from, and we appreciate your passing that and signing off on it. So with that said, I welcome, you know, email me, whatever, if you have ideas, suggestions about ways we might be able to help East Hampton. I think one of our, one of our hopes here is that we can do what Dwayne Gretzky talked about doing, that you don't skate to where the puck is, you skate to where the puck's going to be. And so I hope we can help East Hampton as more and more things come from the state, for example, you know, things that schools have to do. If we can help get ahead of that and help develop professional development, or support or so on, that can help your district and all the small districts around western part of the state meet those kind of mandates, I think we're doing our job. So if you see the puck going somewhere and want to let us know that and encourage us to respond to that, we're glad to do that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Finance Subcommittee has not met and has nothing to report.
Policy Subcommittee is meeting next Thursday, the 22nd. At 6:30.
Is it 6:30? Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:30.
I looked at the date, but I didn't look at the time.
6:30. Thank you.
And, sorry. No, I think we're meeting for a Corey policy, right?
That's one of the policies. We actually have a number-
Fingerprints coming?
Pardon me?
Are fingerprints coming?
Yes.
They've already started, you started them?
In fact, Sue Colby and I had, and our Chair, Deb Luznia, we all went and had our fingerprints done today.
And you're still here?
And you came back clean.
Yeah, I'm good so far.
Do we have to do, just you?
Not all of us.
Oh, give them time.
I'm only dead, I guess, yes, but-
Elected officials, you don't have to have it.
Sue, right now, is in charge of all our rules and regulations about fingerprinting and who has to have it done and who doesn't, but it was an interesting experience. We went to a hotel in Springfield, to a hotel room, and-
You may want to save this story for another segment.
And there was a little machine, and we each took our turn, and, yeah, so.
So we had to pay money to do it.
Yes.
Our own personal money to do it. Doesn't that stink? Just, sorry, just throwing that out there.
That's true.
That's an unfunded mandate.
It is.
Another example, yes.
It's well-intended, but it's problematic.
Overkill.
At any rate, we do have some other policies that need to be updated as well because of changes at the state level, and some notes that we got from our Coordinated Program Review about tweaking a few of our policies, so we have a number to look at, so it won't be a short meeting, but it'll be a very worthwhile meeting.
Okay, and Jordan isn't with us for the Student Activities Update. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping over the CES update.
It's okay, I mean, I think Bill just gave the best update you could get, and we meet next tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Wendy. Okay, Student Activities Update, Jordan isn't with us. Does anyone have anything that they know about that they want to share?
I have a past thing that I want to share, well, actually, a couple, I guess. And first of all, I was hoping Jordan would be here so she could tell us about her trip, her foreign language trip.
That's right, yes.
So we'll have to catch her the next time. I just want to send kudos out to Ms. Davis at the high school, and she put on a spring play this past weekend with some of the high school kids, and it was The Curious Savage, and it was a fabulous play, and they all did great. All the actors, actresses, and everyone behind the scenes, they did a fabulous job, so. And then I know that we had a couple art shows, and I was able to get to the high school art show, and that was, that's really great, and it's running through June 10th for the high school one at the Old Town Hall, the Flywheel area, so.
And it's open most, most of the whole day, every day, as it is, so encourage people to go.
And I believe in the back room, you were asking about the video of the, the video that won for the year.
Yes.
That was in the Flywheel area of the Town Hall, I saw that Saturday night.
Oh, neat.
And then the, also the art at-
The elementary art show.
Yes, and the-
It ended tonight.
At the Eastworth Building.
Right.
Yeah.
So that was a short one. Yeah, it started Friday night, and through tonight.
I went Friday, I guess it was, and there was a really nice turnout, and lots of excitement and energy around it.
That's good. Great. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, I have a few things tonight. We did get our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education District Review, the final report, so you have that in your packet this evening, and I wanted to just discuss some of the highlights of the report, the process and the highlights, and then have time for you to ask any questions you might have about the report itself. So the process was that the review took place last June, very near the end of the school year, as you can see from the date, I believe it was June 10th, when they arrived. They were here from June 10th to June 13th. And the evaluators from the department came to the district, they did classroom observations and interviews. They interviewed classroom teachers, staff, they interviewed principals, they interviewed me. And in February of this year, they went away and told us, well, actually, before they went away, they told us that they expected that we would get the draft of the report in August. And we were pleased about that, because getting it in August, we'd be able to use it as we created our goals and plans for the following school year. Well, the draft arrived in February of this year, so it was really a long time after it was anticipated, and we were clearly well into the school year. And when we first received the draft, we were asked to look it over and send them any corrections that we had discovered. So, you know, we very much appreciated that, I'm not sure if that happened in the past, but there were a number of items in the report that we believed were not as authentic as they could have been, and there were some misconceptions. So we sent back, I sent back a list of things that we felt needed to be corrected, and they did correct them and made note of them. Sometimes it was the language, because it appeared that, well, for one thing, there was a criticism in the initial report about us not having our district-determined measures ready, when in fact, they weren't due until, we don't have to submit them until June of this year. So I just made a comment about that, that I didn't feel that it was necessarily fair to give us a critique about that when we were still, you know, ahead of the deadline. So it was, it was things like that, and they did make amends to that in the report. So we finally received the, the final version of the report in April, and the report is posted on the department website after we received the final report, but I did email them, and I asked that they not post it until I had an opportunity to share it with our district. And this was the first opportunity that we would have after receiving it, to be able to share it with you as a school committee and with the entire district. And so they agreed that they would, it was a public document, but they wouldn't post it until after our meeting tonight, so I was very appreciative of that. Now, we were told, and it's noted on page 13, that the purpose of the visit is not to highlight strengths, but to identify challenges. I think that was hard for the leadership team when we first read the draft, because there really was not a lot about what the strengths were in the district, but they were very clear about that not being the purpose. And I want to remind everyone that this was a snapshot taken in June of 2013. We were already addressing some of what was mentioned in the report, and many new initiatives have been put into place this year at the time of the review, and we had plans to address a number of the initiatives for this coming school year. Again, classroom observations were a snapshot, and the data collected doesn't entirely match the data that we have from the many classroom observations done by all of the administrators in our district, including myself. So I made a comment to that, to that effect in my letter back to them, but they, they replied, and rightfully so, that they were capturing what their evaluators had viewed in our classrooms. Our district is designated as a Level 3 district, that's in the report, and this is due to MCAS results at the high school from years past, and there is a very complicated formula. I think Shirley Guilfeather explained it to some of you a few years ago, about, or a year or so ago, about how they come up with this formula to determine the level of a district. Since that level came out, we have been making very good progress and very good improvements at our high school, and in fact, one of the evaluators, in one of their discussions with me, wondered aloud to me why our high school would be a Level 3, given what they had seen in their visits of our high school. So I thought that that was very encouraging. I'd like to highlight some strengths on page 26, B, under Assessment. The evaluators give a recommendation for a model of assessment using data teams and suggest working with DSAC for guidance. We have been working closely with DSAC on professional development, and the model we put into place at the high school last fall, long before we received this report. So without the report and without having them talk to about, to us about this, we began working with DSAC, and we've worked closely with DSAC, that's also mentioned in the report, on professional development. We have them coming and doing consultations with our teachers, doing coaching with our teachers, providing professional development sessions, and we've had this in an ongoing way even last year. But over the summer, we had data team training with DSAC, and an outspring of that data team training was the model of professional development that's been used at our high school with learning walks and data analysis and using data teams to drive professional development. Kelly Brown, again, has been instrumental in leading that effort at the high school, but all of our high school teachers have actively participated in this model and are very excited about it, and we're very excited about the results, because what happens is the high school teachers as a learning team do observations of the different classrooms, and then they come back and they collect their data, and they formulate the data in ways that they can share with the entire staff. I went to their final presentations during the last Professional Development Day, last week, I believe it was, and each of the groups was giving a presentation of what they had discovered and the data that they had collected, and what actions they'd be taking next year. So it's a wonderful, wonderful model, and I just want to point out that we put it into place long before we received this report in February, and we plan to expand it to the middle school and the elementary schools next year. The report is a confirmation of what we discovered this year, that there is a power of learning walks and data teamwork, so it did confirm that for us. We've also provided comprehensive professional development on the Educator Evaluation System and District-Determined Measures, and I think Shirley has clearly included you, school committee members, in that training. In fact, our ability to provide a diverse professional development program has been limited by the amount of time and training it has taken to implement state initiatives such as the Educator Evaluation System and District-Determined Measures. There is some, there are some comments about different kinds of professional development that they believe we need in our district, and we believe that also. But with a limited amount of time and resources for professional development, we are doing the best we can to make all of the state deadlines and expectations, and also at the same time, provide that other kind of professional development when we can. It is very difficult now to provide all of the training for all of these new initiatives, as well as the training that we determined from our data analysis for other kinds of professional development that we need. Our limited resources have also made it difficult to implement some of the suggestions found in the report. We are working to implement a strong tiered system of support, but find it challenging to implement without the personnel required for training our teachers and for working with classroom teachers in a tiered system of support. We have had to eliminate our, our support personnel, different positions each year, so it's hard to implement that with fidelity without those, those resources. Common planning time for teachers during the day is also difficult to achieve due to the limited resources we have to free teachers up for common times. We have provided learning opportunities for teachers to collaborate by using faculty meeting time. One faculty meeting of the two that they have in their contract every month is devoted to team time for them, collaborative time, either by grade levels or by content areas. And they can do curriculum work during that time and work on effective instructional practices. And again, we also provide, we've had Dr. Ann Collins from Leslie come and do coaching with our teachers, followed by time for them to collaborate and discuss the coaching model. So I think, as Mitchell Chester said, we are a district that has been very innovative given the, the lack of resources that we've had, and so I'm very proud of our professional development program. We do have our teachers participate in helping us think about what professional development is going to be useful to them, and they have other ways of doing it besides just the Professional Development Committee. We do pay stipends for teachers to be on our Professional Development Committee, but oftentimes, don't have many teachers sign up for it, again, because they have very busy schedules, given all the requirements that we are trying to meet now. We, we have found some suggestions in the report that we are interested in pursuing, and we have gotten some good ideas from the report. We did meet as a leadership team, by the way, to go over this final report and really digest it. We will do more with it this summer when we begin to work on our goals for next year. We have three summer retreat days planned for the leadership team, and this will be one of the pieces of data that we use as we make our plans for next year. But we will use the data on pages 47 to 49 as we develop a new strategic plan. You know, we will be talking about each building and what principals' perceptions are, we'll be doing more surveys about those kinds of things, we'll talk about the observations we've done as administrators, but we will use that data as we develop a new strategic plan and as we develop our goals for next year. We are going to be working on a new strategic plan this summer because our former plan expires at the end of this year. We will be seeking information and feedback from staff and from parents and from school committee members through surveys and, and other venues. We will use the data in the report and suggestions offered to consider new models of professional development. There were some interesting suggestions in terms of how we might structure our Professional Development Day, so we certainly will consider those. And we will make it a priority to look for exemplary staff to call on for instructional leadership. That, again, was something we had been talking about. We certainly have pockets of- We certainly have pockets of places, and particularly at the high school this year, where exemplary teachers are in leadership roles to guide professional development. And we are looking for other teachers in the district and encourage, encouraging them to step up to provide leadership. I had a conversation with another teacher in our district just this past week about that, and she was very eager to take on that role. So we have some, some wonderful staff here in East Hampton, as you all know, exemplary staff, and we do want to provide those opportunities to tap into that expert leadership. So those are some of the things that we're talking about now. This is a, a weighty document, so it takes more than one reading, but those are some of our thoughts at this point in time. So I will turn it over to you now to ask any questions you may have about this district review.
Can I just make two qualifying comments? This is all public record, being publicly. First of all, when we met with them last year, it was toward the end of their visit, I think it was three days, and I think we met with them on the, the end of the second day or the third day, so they'd been here for a while. And their comments to us in meeting with us were exceedingly positive and exceedingly supportive, and they seemed very impressed by what we did and how our students performed and the quality of instructors that we had, and so on and so forth. So I think, just to reiterate, that the purpose of this is not to tell you what you were doing right, but to point out any and everything that could use improvement. And secondly, the, it's discouraging to see the amount of weight given strictly to MCAS scores and the reflection of all of these statistics that they're creating in the document, because I don't think that's the truest, most accurate reflection today of what the students in the district are actually learning, how they're able to function, how well they read and communicate and think creatively and intellectually. So those are just my two qualifying.
And it's not even just the scores, but how they interpret the scores.
Exactly.
That's enormously frustrating at times. The narrow way that they extract information and create conclusions.
If I could add, I, I'm glad that Laura spoke to the concern that she did, because I think it's easy to say nice things face-to-face and then to be damningly critical in writing long after. I mean, this is a, this is a late document. In my classroom, it would be failing, given the amount of time it came in after when it was due. But I, you know, I mean, I, I think folks who have the ability to write reports like this, I'm curious, given the reliance they have on percentiles, how to contextualize that information. And I have to confess, and I have to remind myself, that in certain situations, the, the higher the number is better, right? Because the way it's presented, you know, they'll identify something as being in the X percentile, then Y, then Z, and you tend to think that X is better than Y or than Z, but as you read down, the narrative that goes with the numbers. So I'd be curious, I assume they do reports like this for similarly situated schools, right? They have all this demographic and socioeconomic data. And I, I'm just wondering, do they make that available? Do we know? And I'll, I'll confess that part of what I'm trying to figure out is how not to get, you know, terrifically discouraged by the way they describe what, in writing, what I think is really much, much better than, than what's written here. But I don't know, is that, you know, if that's available? I guess that's a question going forward.
All of the district review reports are available on the department website of any of the schools that they've done.
When they, they make, most of the percentiles are statewide.
Right.
So it's East Hampton and Wellesley.
Yes.
And Weston and Hoyouk, you know, all four of them, as though they're just four randomly, you know? And I, and I just wondered if there's any merit to, you know, in terms of, since so much of their judgment is based on where East Hampton lies in those percentiles, some of what is, is there, I think, is comparing truly different places, socioeconomically and demographically. It would be just interesting to see a consistent comparison there, because they, they, they use that data. If you're going to acknowledge that that data is important enough to print it up, then say, okay, so what about that? They compare it to the state as a whole, but again, that's like comparing our performance to the state as a whole. I would like, and this goes back to one of the things that I think Bill Deal was talking about, which is how can districts that face similar sets of circumstances benefit from collaborative efforts? If there are districts, for example, within the collaborative, that are similar to East Hampton and are achieving better results, even though I share quite deeply some of the concerns about the high-stakes testing and the standardized testing movement that's sweeping our, our educational world, that would be really useful, because then we could reach out to those districts, or districts could reach out to us. And, and that's where you get one plus one to equaling something more than two. But it's, it's absent. This is a, this is sort of like a silo, and, you know, this is how the corn is in that silo with no sense of what's going on anywhere else and completely separate from them. So I, I don't know if we could urge, and I know that it might not happen before the next presidential election at the rate that this organization moves, but at some point, once they've done it, from then on, it should be doable, and it would be really useful.
Right.
Districts that face common circumstances that have differential outcomes could really benefit from sharing that information, rather than just reading about where you are on the global scale and being either elated or, you know, bummed out. And that, there's nothing you can do about that, is say, okay, well, they're going to work harder. And I know that you've outlined very specific things that you will do, and there is useful data here. I think that's the key piece that's missing from this report, and, and makes it of, it's more of a, sort of a kick in the ass without a sense of, and here's how you might. And they do offer, you know, they give Andy a suggestion, here's the budget model that you should use, right? And, and I don't know whether that budget, but they're very specific about that, right?
Yeah.
There's like six other school districts that use it, and they give you a website and a whole bit, but they, you know, they don't do that in, in other places that would be educationally useful.
Well, and quite honestly, if you look at those other budgets, they are something that, you know, they're, they're obviously, it's not apples and apples either.
Right.
In terms of the size of the districts and the complexity of, of those budgets. And I'm not sure that, you know, the question was, how do we make the budget easily understandable? And, and going to those other, I would encourage you to have a look at them, and...
But they also ask for more detail, and one of the things that I think has made our budgets easier to understand over time has been the executive summary sections that we can then go back into what's really quite dense and difficult, I find to be quite challenging, and, and, you know, I tried periodically, this is my job, to, to read through it and make complete sense of it. But the suggestion that doing that more often, as though it was going to be, you know, I think, knowing that this is something that goes public and knowing the way statistics have such an appeal to the, to the news media, my fear is that it will portray East Hampton in a way that's inaccurate.
Yes.
Because it, it lacks the, the context, and it's at odds with what they saw.
And the intent, the purported intent of this is a building block. Here's your constructive criticism for moving forward, but the data is so diluted that it's ineffective.
And untimely.
Untimely.
And I will say that, you know, not that there isn't something that we can take away from this, and I did say that to Ava Mitchell, Associate Commissioner, whom I corresponded with, but I will say that my superintendent colleagues have all had a similar feeling about this, as I have. You know, it just, it never feels like it captures what we really believe exists in our, in our districts, and isn't really a tremendously helpful tool for us.
Oh, I apologize, at the risk of, of overdoing it. I think this is an example of what frustrates me, is that the district should redesign and strengthen its system of tiered supports, aligning it more closely to the DESI-tiered system of support model. Why isn't that plural? Why aren't there a series of models that makes sense? Right? In other places, they talk about the need for differentiated instruction, but there's a singular model. And I think that that is what my, you know, my coming away from this document was, that some of the criticism was about a failure to be effectively differentiated, that certain types of questions were being asked, but only thirty-five percent of the time were twenty-seven percent of the students, more than forty percent engaged with those ten questions, or things like that, that were really not so helpful to me. But then they turn around and, and suggest, you know, that here's the one model to go to. And I, I don't know, it just, it's, it's frustrating, because I know that this is well-intended, that, that they're coming out here designed to help us set an agenda for progress so that we can better serve the students here, and, and I hope that we can draw things from this. But I just, I really, as I read through it, I kept thinking, oh, you know, this is, this is, this is not, it leaves, leaves me in a place that's not how I feel about this school system, and not the experience that my children have had in the school system, and not the experience that I've witnessed with the teachers that I've seen in the school system. I mean, there's nothing in here about the extraordinary great work, or it's not the purpose of this to talk about the terrific work that's done developing young teachers, and that, you know, placements in East Hampton High School, for example, are sought out by local teacher training programs, and, you know, some schools in the Valley are frustrated that they can't get more of their students. Now, why would that be with a report like this?
Because that would help inform, if you're doing something right in the district that you can highlight, that would help inform how to make improvements in other levels in the district. And the other thing that irritates me is that they put so much time and money into this, and we all came down and sat here, and this report looks like what I would have expected if they had pulled it together and gotten it to us by August, and the fact that this is what they came up with within additional six months.
And, you know, I, I questioned that as well, and questioned the usefulness of this document arriving so late, and the response was that they were understaffed, which I thought was interesting.
Maybe we could go there and ensure to them and write a report to help advise them on how to pull that together, yeah.
So, yeah, but it is, it is what it is, and I think that, you know, we, we want to try to, to take what we can from it, whatever kernels of, of help we can from it, but...
I have a question for you.
Sure.
On this instructional inventory, I was just curious, the evidence.
What page is that?
It's on page forty-seven, begins on forty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
The evidence that they refer to here, non-partial, clear, and consistent, what evidence is that? Is that things they have observed, or is that documentation that's been provided to them?
Oh, oh, yes. Okay, yes, yes. I did want to talk to you about that, because I actually asked them, so that starts, those charts that start on page forty-six.
Forty-seven.
Or forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I highlighted this on forty-seven. So originally, it said, "non-partial, clear, and consistent," and then I think it said, "all district schools." And it looked like our elementary schools were doing absolutely terribly on everything. But, so what it is, is that it was observed, there were no observations of it, or, you know, wasn't observed at all, that's zero. You get a zero if there were no observations.
So this, all this evidence is based on observation?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
And one, if it was observed in a partial way, and two, if it was clear and consistent. And then overall, the last one is overall results for all district schools. So for all district schools, in this particular instance, it was not observed at all and only one, 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 one observation.
So all district schools refers to us?
Elementary.
All five.
Yeah, all of our schools, elementary, middle school, and high school.
Not a regional thing, not a state thing?
No, just us, right.
Okay.
Right.
You know, I'm sorry, because this is not the middle school that my children attended. I was, I was recently, my son's about to go into ninth grade, and I met with a teacher, and I shared what Miss Bust said about, oh, he's going to be mad at me. I won't say what it was, but at the end of his experience with her in sixth grade, and the teachers who have had him this year said that she was absolutely on target in terms of the analysis, what would help him learn more effectively, where he, I mean, it was just, it was just this sort of affirmation that even two years down the road, that her assessment of, of, of his sort of total existence as a student, because in the middle school, they're still, they work with a, a small number of teachers who get to know them really well and, and do a terrific job. And when I, you know, when I, you did, you looked through that page forty-seven, it's just, it's fascinating, because it's, I don't know what the middle school they were looking at.
Well, we, we wondered that about some of these as well, because, as I said, it wasn't what we've observed.
And it's not what they came and told us about after their, their visit. I know that Wendy and Dan, you guys are, you didn't sit through this, but we had these conversations.
Oh, it was like, yeah.
I feel like whoever wrote this wasn't in the room that had the conversation with us. It wasn't like we were going to go slash the tires if they told us what they were going to write.
Just, just me and Peter.
I'm sorry, I'm going on, I should stop.
I know, we should, we're giving it more weight than it honestly deserves and more attention, so.
This is bothersome.
Take the kernels, moving on.
I did have one other question for you. When, one thing that they had suggested in here to enhance the Professional Development Days for teachers was delayed openings rather than half-days.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Did you find any merit in that suggestion?
You know, we, we haven't really talked about it. You know, I think there are pluses and minuses to however you do it. Right now, our parents are used to, you know, their students leaving in the afternoon. What they believed would be the, the positive of that is that we could get all schools together, just to have vertical alignment, because right now, when we dismiss, partway through the day, we dismiss at different times, and we have to do that.
Because of our buses.
Because of our buses. So however, our bus, because of our buses, we also get to school at different times in the morning.
Right.
So then you'd have to determine what, yeah. I mean, there are problems no matter when you do that, so. We do have two Professional Development Days during the school year when we can work vertically. And, you know, one thing we've considered is moving one of, another one of those, or two of those, probably one of those full days that we have at the beginning of the school year, into the school year, so we could use it for, in, in that way. It's just been traditionally, those first three days were at the beginning, but I thought some of those comments made sense.
Were helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments?
I want to comment, and it's, I read through and had a similar response about the student support and outcomes in data, but early on, it was on page eleven, I think, and just with some experience in other districts, I was impressed that it was noted, and it is a positive, under, oh my gosh, regarding the new state educator evaluation, that teachers and administrators confirmed key components of the state's new model have been implemented, and that initial experiences have been positive and productive. And I, I just, I just want that to be said out loud, because I don't think that's a, a standard feeling across a lot of districts in the state who are implementing the new teacher eval, and that East Hampton has taken the time to do that thoroughly and sensitively and include teachers and engage them in ways that they can really embrace an evaluation model that could really turn a district on its head and really do damage to morale.
No, it's gone very smoothly, but we have taken lots of time and provided lots of support, because we have all been teachers, and, and we know what it would have been like to have to adopt something that is this intensive in a, a short period of time. So we really have tried to be as supportive of them as we would want them to be of their students in learning anything new. I mean, it's, it's a teaching and learning model that we've used, but I was pleased to see that, too.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on that? All right. So the next thing I just wanted to share rather briefly with you is the, the next decision that we're coming upon here in our district. Always something coming down the pike. And this one is, as you know, we did the, the park pilot this year, which is the new assessment that's coming into place that is aligned with the Common Core State Standards. And this year, you were allowed to choose whether you were going to do the MCAS or, or do it entirely, or do the MCAS and do the park. And so we chose to do the MCAS and do this park pilot so we could get some experience with it. So this year, by June thirtieth, if we want to be in the early decision submission, we So this year, by June 30th, if we want to be in the early decision submission, we can, we need to decide whether we are going to do either park or MCAS tests in ELA and mathematics for students in grades three through eight. Grade 10 has to take the MCAS, and I think they're doing the MCAS in grades nine, and well, not, no, not nine, but grade 10 has to take the MCAS. So in order to help us make an informed decision, the Superintendent's Association has planned what they call a drive-in, and that's going to be May 19th, this coming Monday. So, you know, superintendents across the state will be participating in that, getting information on what the issues are that we need to attend to in making these decisions. On May 22nd, we have our Superintendent's Association Spring Meeting, and this will be a topic at that spring meeting as well. For myself as a superintendent, for all of us as superintendents, these are wonderful opportunities for us to learn what we need to learn, get the facts, and also to talk to our colleagues about, and to find out what everyone else is thinking and why they're thinking, and it's a great way to enable us to collaborate on this decision-making. And we, superintendents in Western Massachusetts, do a lot of collaboration. So those will be two good opportunities. And then on May 28th, the department is going to have a conference call and webinar on the same topic. So I will be bringing back the information to our leadership team, we'll just be discussing it at length and make decisions, and we'll let you know, you know, what we decide and why we decide, make the decision that we're making, so. Just, I don't have all the information now. There is also an October 1st deadline, which is pending availability. So if you want to, if you definitely make the decision you want to do park, then you really need to get that decision in by June 30th. If you're still in a quandary about whether to do it, then you really have until October to do it pending availability.
So to be clear, Nancy, this is for us to decide if next year we phase out of MCAS, with the exception of the 10th grade?
Right.
And we know for a fact that that's going to be coming down the road at some point, or do we not know that?
Yes, no, that's the expectation.
Know with certainty that park will...
Yes, because right now, MCAS doesn't align with the Common Core State Standards, and it was our state's decision to adopt a new assessment rather than try to revise the MCAS. Apparently, that was going to be very expensive and very difficult. So the state has contracted with Pearson, and they have developed this new assessment that we piloted this year, so.
And is that process complete at this point?
You know, I think it is, but I don't remember the final date for the pilot this year. It's interesting. Well, and then the other decision we'd have to make is whether we're going to do it, a computer-based assessment or a paper and pencil assessment. This year, we decided paper and pencil, and I'm so glad we did, having talked to some of my colleagues, because there were all kinds of glitches with the computer-based assessment. So clearly, they're going to learn from that, and the hope would be that they will get rid of those glitches before we begin to take it next year, if we were to take it next year. But that will be a decision we'll have to make, too. Next year, as I understand it, they are going to offer paper and pencil and computer-based, so lots of decisions.
Could we make a further suggestion, too, that if we do decide to go the park route for next year, if we do, that we would think very soon about having some sort of informational sessions for parents? Because I know there's a lot of negative publicity surrounding the park, there's a lot of misinformation, and so just to try to play, present both sides, so that parents, you know, aren't undoing, you know...
Right, and the Gazette has had a number of articles of school districts in the valley that have opted out of doing.
Yeah.
That's what I was just going to bring up, exactly. Which I couldn't help but wonder, if it's a pilot program and a test program, why wouldn't you want to test it versus opt-in-out? I think it was based on too much testing type thing.
Yeah.
But if it's something coming down the road, wouldn't you want to have had a little shot at practicing it? And that way, see, you know, have some input into how you felt it was and compare the two, and they didn't do any much follow-up on it, though.
That was the way we looked at it. We thought we wanted to get an experience with it.
But we do accept that that is a burden. When you're talking about third-grade students, these children are eight years old, this is, it's an inordinate amount of testing, because it's a transitional period. So I think having some sort of forum where parents can discuss their concerns that are valid, and we can...
Well, and we were lucky in the pilot, we were asked only to do a pilot at the middle school and the high school. So our elementaries weren't involved.
Right.
And we might have made a different decision, had that been the case. I think our principals did a very good job of informing parents about the pilot that students were going to take, and so your point is a good one, Laura. We need to do that same kind of in-depth information to our parents if we make a decision to go with a park assessment.
Just to remind the committee, I know we've talked about this a lot, but a few meetings ago, I had put in our school committee information, the Division V meeting that I went to regarding this.
That's right, that's another good piece of, good resource.
There is, there's some good information in there, if you want to refer to it.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, matters for action, we have minutes to approve.
Okay, move to approve the minutes of the April 22nd, 2014 school committee meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain, one abstention.
Aye.
Okay. Moving down to warrants and payroll.
Okay. I move to approve the school payroll dated May 1st, 2014, in the amount of $452,510.43.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 1st, 2014, in the amount of $280,590.47.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the school payroll dated May 15th, 2014, in the amount of $488,330.13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May 15th, 2014, in the amount of $161,147.24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have, we have a, are you supposed to talk about this or no? We have a one-year leave of absence request for the 2014, 2015 school year. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Is she at the elementary level?
No, she works at the high school and middle school level. She's a shared position between high school and middle school. I am recommending this year's leave of absence. This is a unique opportunity for this staff member, and she will be working in a school in Alaska, and they have the tiered system of support strongly in place in the school district. So, you know, after one year, she can experience that and come back, and we can learn from this experience that she has, so.
Motion to approve the one-year lea, okay, no, Peter, good.
No, I just wanted to be...
So we could have discussion in a second.
Oh, you're right, we can, I apologize.
Motion to approve a one-year leave of absence request for the 2014, 2015 school year for Sarah Peters.
Second.
Unpaid.
Pardon?
Good qualification.
Unpaid.
Yes.
Discussion?
So I just, my question was, so then you would, you would similarly hire someone on a one-year basis?
That's right, one-year appointment.
And I know that nothing is certain, and there's not a contractual obligation, but you're relatively confident that this is something where there's going to be a return to us?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, it sounds like a year of professional development. Is the Alaska model one that they recognize on Beacon Hill?
Yes, because Alaska is part of the United States.
Well, I know, but I mean, if, it sounds like it's a great system, but I just want to be sure that...
He said Beacon Hill, not Capitol Hill.
She doesn't come back and discover that this tiered system that we're encouraged in that other report...
Good point, good point, Peter. Perhaps we have our own, our own model, Peter, is that what you're telling?
Just, no, I just want to be, you know...
Yes. I think, I know we can learn from the experience when she returns.
Any other questions? We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the request for an out-of-state field trip for the Whitebrook Middle School students to Portland, Connecticut.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have, I have a question about the school choice slots. So there's been some discussion, just among people in the city, about some disconnect between the census, or whatever method that we have for obtaining names for incoming kindergarten students. Are we extremely confident that we found all of those people, that there are in fact three slots for the kindergarten?
We have actually kind of expanded the number of students that we think we might get into the kindergarten. So we are as confident as we can be that we have enough slots.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note publicly that we've addressed that.
Yes.
Good.
Very carefully.
Okay. Motion to approve the request for three additional school choice slots at the kindergarten level for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
What was that, Peter?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, it's not adjourn, it's like we go into executive session, right?
Motion to adjourn to the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so at this time, we'll move into executive session.